Yes.
Sorry about that.
Um, did you want me to go back and cover anything? This has just started or should I proceed?
I think it's fine. Please, yeah, go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, you can, you can go on and proceed. We'll just come in whether it needed to be recorded. And my suggestion was to go in and record it since there are some other interested parties here.
Great. I think that's a good idea. So, um, so there were some, there's been, it was brought to my attention. There's been some discussion about how, how detailed expenditures are approved within the budget currently and the authority for department heads or elected officials or agency directors to manage those expenditures. So the policy as proposed here says that elected officials, agency directors and department heads are expected to manage expenditures within the level of details approved by the B O C C. And this is something I'd, I'm looking for B O C C input on. So, and it follows that, for example, if the B O C C approves total expenditures for a department, staff may allocate those dollars differently between spending categories. In other words, if the budget just says, you know, human resources, you get $200,000. In that case, that level of detail, the, the director of human resources would be able to spend, reallocate monies across categories. However, if the B O C C approves expenditures by type, those personnel supplies, services, et cetera, then the departments would need to spend within those categories. And, and then I just made a note here that based on my understanding, the current budget is published has that higher level of detail. And but we could cert, but, but as I understand it, the, the more granular detail, like the category level detail is discussed through the budgeting process. And so perhaps if the B O C C wished, the budget could refer to those documents that are produced through the budgeting process. Just, just a thought. Do any, does anyone on the line have any questions about that? I guess there's truly two issues to think about. One is, you know, empowering department heads and agency directors and officials to budget within that bigger number and, and move expenditures across categories. Is the thing B O C C is comfortable with? Or is that, you know, is that already what's being done? And then the other question is, you know, if you would like a higher level of detail and, and have departments manage within those categories, do you want to do it by having a more detailed budget, annual budget? Or by having like a reference to those individual departmental budgets that you discuss in the annual budgeting process?
I guess I would say, I think it varies across the board currently. And in the last, you know, handful of years, I think we've gotten more detailed naturally in kind of the note taking and or line, like titling or adding line items just for clarity of and consistency and a kind of a continuation so that balls don't get dropped between incoming and outgoing elected officials. I think, I really, I really think it would depend perhaps. I guess, I, I guess I think there's another conversation to be had on that, that approach and kind of looking across, across departments and offices on, you know, what the pros and cons might be.
And I could also, I would also say like this particular policy or piece of the policy, it, it doesn't have to live within the purchasing and procurement policy. It could, it could belong in the budgeting policy or the general expense policy. And, and I don't mean to muddy the waters there, but I do want to point out that there's, there's kind of a, there's a collection or a suite of policies that interact with one another. But, you know, we're just, I'm, I'm calling this as, as it is, it is something that is always addressed somewhere in county finance policy.
Yeah.
That way.
Yeah. I mean, generally I, I agree with the, the including, the inclusion of it here.
Okay.
I, I think that would be helpful.
Well, I would just point out that if it were adopted as written, you know, the, the department heads would have the power to move dollars across categories based on how the budget is currently published. Just want to make that clear how it, how it is written. Unless there were some kind of greater level of detail approved or referenced in the budget. But I'll go ahead and move on then.
So, so one, I mean, one, one thing I'd want to raise for consideration in this section is whether there should be like an upper either absolute, you know, like $5,000 or, or maybe it needs to be higher or some percentage of a department's budget. I just, you know, the, the situation I'm thinking of is where, you know, a budget, an annual budget gets passed at a fair, you know, at a pretty high level. And there's actually like, you know, this clause is written would, would allow pretty significant movements of money in that case. I don't know the right answer, but it seems like, again, like either a, a dollar figure cap or a percent of a total apartment's budget or something like that might be worth exploring there.
Good suggestion.
Yeah, or, or, you know, if technically we are approving budget and approving funds, yeah, I think I agree with you, Commissioner Feeler. I don't, I don't, I do not, I would agree that we, that kind of latitude should not be given or expected. And I don't think that that's generally over or abused in that way. But if we, I think I'm, I'm in alignment in creating some more parameters over how those can be shifted, so.
So you could, as this is written, you could either follow the way Commissioner Feeler's suggesting that, you know, up to a point, those power, the, the power to move money across categories is allowed, or you could approve a more detailed budget.
I'm also sorry, just taking a step back and thinking like we talked about the next step in working on this procedure being taking this to department heads and including elected officials overseeing departments. You know, maybe this is something to flag very specifically to ask them, you know, what, you know, from their perspective, sort of what makes sense. Because again, I'm not sure what the right, you know, threshold is here. I also, sorry, as I was thinking, it'd also be good to include in here. I feel like when, when this kind of shift gets made, it would be really good to require it to just be recorded somewhere. I mean, I think it would be, but I know in our case, like, you know, down the road, you know, like, like, like later in that budget year, you would be like, oh, do we have budget in this line item for X, Y and Z? And we won't know if things are being moved around within this discretion.
I think maybe require at a minimum reporting to the finance director?
I think so, yeah. Or, or, I mean, I just sort of would want it, I would want these shifts to be documented somewhere, not, not, not like recorded with the clerk or something like super formal, just like some, some way of tracking it so that we don't end up inadvertently sort of, you know, shifting some money out of one line item and then going back to that line item later in the year, looking at the original budget, spending up to it and then being over, overall. And maybe I'm overthinking that, but it just seems like someone has to know what's being shifted.
Yep. I think since we, we, the, the policy nominates the finance director to be sort of in charge of how money is spent. For now, that's probably a good, a good placeholder to say. Any kind of intra-departmental transfer, maybe again, over a certain amount should be reported to the finance director. Crystal, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, I can track that in, in the finance system. And I believe there is an area there for, for notes if we were gonna reallocate between line items within, within a department or office. I think that it needs to be clear as to whether or not that's all line items or just those operating. I, I don't know that we want to give the authority to move monies from payroll liabilities to the other operating expenditures. If the B O C C has any thought on that.
So maybe certain kinds of limitations, not just dollar amounts, but categorical limitations.
Yes, I thi, I think so.
Okay. Sounds like I can, I can look at, you know, before we bring this to department heads, I can look at, you know, what are some other guidelines for this particular practice? All right. If there aren't any other questions on that topic, I will move to the authorization levels and required procedures. So this is, this is really the meat and potatoes of, of this policy. And I would note that no statute governs this particular section. And so the county has wide latitude in determining what is an appropriate threshold for various levels of authority and how it defines the procurement procedure that's required for each of those thresholds. And so when we're going through this, I just would like for you to be thinking in terms of what is practical in terms of a dollar amount. And, you know, the numbers you're seeing here in this column for Lake County are not, you know, they're gonna be very different in other counties in, in Jefferson County or, you know, any, any much larger county. And these are numbers that are typical of counties, you know, and municipalities in the same relative size, population range as Lake. So that's where I've gotten these numbers. I've also discussed them with, with Crystal in a little bit. And so please think about, do these ranges sound right to you? And you have to balance the practicality of, of these dollar amounts with, you know, obviously protecting the public interest. And, and I would, I would just also caution that sometimes, you know, the process and onerous procurement process can be more costly, you know, than simply paying a little more for a service. And, and that's just a, that's just a reality. And so I'm not, I'm not, I have an opinion one way or another, but just keep that in mind. Okay, so first, right off the bat, any requests, I'm gonna jump here. Any requests to purchase goods or services in a dollar amount of $1,000 or greater that were not approved by the B O C C, so through the budgeting process, must be approved prior to committing funds. So that's, that's something that's really important to remember that essentially all purchases need to be part of, they need to be budgeted for before you even get to a procurement step. And this includes savings resulting from unexpended budgeted funds. So you have $10,000 budgeted for chewing gum. You only end up needing $5,000 for chewing gum. And the remaining $5,000 would be considered unbudgeted. And so would need approval prior to committing those funds. Also, dollar amount as referred to in this table includes not just one-off expenses, but total aggregate spending on a good or service within one budget year. So a, you know, subscription for a trade article, you know, for example, maybe not the best example, but it's not just the, the $12 you pay for the month. It's, it's the full amount for the year. And any questions on that, that particular paragraph? There's, there's a lot going on there. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and just walk through this table. And you'll see there are two sections, budgeted expenditures and unbudgeted expenditures. Okay, for budgeted expenditure.
Can I ask one question on that paragraph up there?
Yep.
How does that work with purchasing parts for vehicles? That wouldn't be a one-off purchase. That would be throughout the whole year.
I think a single purchase for a single part, this would, first of all, you, you have a budget for parts, I would guess.
Yeah.
And so this would be a budgeted expense. Do those parts normally cost, does a single part cost less than $1,000?
Um, sometimes, but mostly for the heavy.
Sometimes.
They're quite expensive.
That's an interesting point. So this, that, I think that really speaks to these thresholds and whether or not these thresholds work for your particular department. But, but as it's written, if you have a part that costs less than $1,000, you would be authorized to purchase that part without any further approval, you as the department head. And you would just need to follow the, and I'm scrolling down here, to the small purchase procurement process, which essentially is, is just a reasonable and good faith effort to make sure you're getting the best quality and best price product. That dollar amount, it does, it isn't intended to apply to an entire category of purchases. It's meant to apply to single purchases. I can work on clarifying that because, I mean, to me, the purchase of a single car is different than the purchase of, you know, a subscription, let's say.
Okay, I understand that. And I do agree with the dollar amounts because I think anything over $1,000, I would need to approve anyways as the department head. And if it goes further than that, I, you know, obviously would need to get commissioner or county manager approval.
Yeah, and so we're gonna, we're gonna, that is how, I think that's currently how things have been operating. And we're trying to, we're, I'm, I'm really trying not to introduce a lot of radical changes to your life, Michael. But, but, yeah. So, but that's really good feedback. So we'll just go ahead and walk through these, these cutoff levels. So any purchase, any budgeted expenditure, less than $1,000, the parties who can authorize, it's pretty much anyone, as long as it's budgeted. And so you have department staff, department head, finance director, county manager, which we expect to have at some point, a man, the managing commissioner, meaning the commissioner that manages that, that department where the expenditure's being made or the B O C C, any of those parties can authorize and expend a budgeted expenditure less than $1,000. And the purchaser should follow the small purchase process, which again is just, is quite basic. It's, it's just a good faith effort to get the best price and quality product for the county. The next category, spending categories, up to $5,000, so $1,000 to $4,999. That type of purchase, as long as it's budgeted, can be approved by the department head, finance director, county manager, managing commissioner or B O C C. Again, still follows the small purchase requirement. The next category is $5,000 to $15,000, which should be, looks like, that should actually be $14,999. And in that case, the, the folks who can authorize are the finance director, county manager, managing commissioner of department or B O C C. And that would follow the simplified procurement process. And I'll scroll down to that really quickly. That's right here. Simplified, simplified procurement is intended to give some stronger guidelines about the efforts to, to get good prices and quality. And, and it does give some guidelines for evaluating products, but it's still flexible enough that if, for example, it's not possible to obtain three bids, you know, the, it's, the purchase won't be prohibited. And, and so, you know, number one is a reasonable and adequate number of written quotes should be solicited and that reasonable efforts will be made to obtain no fewer than three quotes. And I think we know that sometimes that's not possible. Also, the lowest price bidder needs to be selected in this case. And if written quotes are received, they need to be, have certain specifications, but they're, they're fairly basic. And then finally, when evaluating those prices or quotes, the department head or the, well, in this case, it would be the finance director or these other authorized parties would need to refer to the evaluation criteria listed here, which we will, we'll discuss a little bit. But these criteria are very similar to what we've been used to in terms of having to procure purchases. So I would just, before we move on, I would note that presently, under the current policy, any purchase over $5,000 goes to a formal procurement, requires a formal procurement process. So this would actually be a simplifying of, of the policy. Commissioners or anyone else, do you have any thoughts at this point on these dollar amounts, these categories? And the authorities to spend at those levels? And the required procedures before spending the funds?
I don't know that I have a firm suggestion, but I'm gonna look through and keep thinking about, you know, maybe a threshold, a slightly higher threshold for that simplified procurement.
For this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so you can, you know, if you want to go to a higher threshold, like maybe you feel a little concerned about, you know, runaway spending, you can, you can also, you know, limit the, the parties who can authorize that type of expenditure. You know, keep a simplified process, but require higher levels of authority. Just, I'm just presenting some, you know, options, things, ways we can tweak these categories. But this is a very standard table for this type of policy. And the next category is purchases over $15,000 or it should be $15,000 and up. And at that point, I, this would be common that the highest level, purchase level would be authorized only by the Board of County Commissioners. And then it would be subject to formal procurement. And formal procurement, scroll down here, is very similar to what we're accustomed to. It has, there has to be a competitive and published request for bids or proposals. They, those RFPs or IFPs have to include these elements, which again, should be very familiar. They're pretty standard. There are some publication requirements. And then they're subject to the, they'll be evaluated according to the same criteria, which again, we'll, we'll get to a couple of these elements after we go through the table. But a much more robust process. So I think you guys need to think about, and it'd be good to get feedback from department heads on whether these categories make sense. It's really something that the county can and should customize to its needs. Okay.
Sorry, this is Jeff. Sorry, the, the, I, I had one question on the, on that highest level of procedure. Whether, I mean, do we always actually like put out bids? I'm just wondering if there are some, some things where, like, we do the legwork to go out and sort of individually solicit sort of draft contracts or proposals from vendors? Like, I, I'm just thinking of like, you know, does, does CenturyLink really respond to a bid from a county? Is that how it works?
For what, what service are you thinking of for CenturyLink?
Well, I'm thinking like, you know, for our phone services or like large utility contracts. I'm just thinking there are some vendors who, I mean, I can see RFP working for sort of like professional services or construction contracts. I'm just not sure all vendors are out there being responsive to like bids put out in the paper. I, this is a total question. I'm not, I, I, it just, it seemed to me that there are some services where we go out and do the legwork to get a few different sort of proposals from companies.
Yeah, it is not inappropriate to send the RFP to a contemplated provider, to someone you've been talking to. So that, that certainly.
Okay, okay. Oh, but, but we would still need one common, you know, RFP delineating the services we're looking for, so it's consistent.
Yeah, unless it is subject, we'll, we'll get down to this, but unless subject to one of these exempt purchases. And, and I just, just to also put this in context of the current policy, the current policy has only one exempt purchase type, and that is an emergency purchase. And that is not normal. It is not common and it's not best practice. Exempt purchases are important. They're, they're, you know, valid categories where competitive bidding just isn't, isn't appropriate or is too onerous or not possible. And so it's possible that the CenturyLink contract could fall within one of these exemptions. And I don't get does, but just imagine if they were the only internet service provider to, in Lake County, then the county would not need to put that, put that out to bid, that service out to bid.
But also, I was just gonna chime in on that using the CenturyLink example that they, there is a state contract that allows for reduced rates to the local government. So that's another reason why you would want to have to put it out to a competitive bid.
Yeah, so piggyback purchases is an example. I think of what Chris is talking about where if, if the state has been able to negotiate or other counties have been able to negotiate better rates with a provider, and that provider can be chosen as a result without going to RFP. That's this piggyback purchases position. Similarly, cooperative purchases, if the county and the city were to contract with a provider together and, and able to obtain a, a better rate, it does not need to go through the procurement process. Does that make sense, Jeff? I know you're a little, Jeff had, may have had to step out for a minute. And I'm gonna scroll back up here. So I did include this unbudgeted expenditures part of the table just, just to really drive home this point. Because as I, as I researched best practices, this was stressed over and over that the most important thing in county budgeting and, and spending is that, that expenditures are budgeted before they're made, that before funds are committed, that they are approved by, by the governing body, at least through the budget process. So anything less than $1,000, those purchases can be made even if they're not budgeted under the, as this policy is proposed by these parties, department head, finance director, county manager, managing commissioner or B O C C, following the small purchase process. But anything above 1,000 does need to come before. But anything above a thousand does need to come before the board if it's not budgeted. Okay. Any questions about this table or comments? I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a note for myself to clarify aggregate spending. Thanks for that question, Michael. Okay, kind of been through, I think the next part of the policy is these procedures. You know, you, okay, you've gone through the table, you figured out. Okay, I, I'm, I am a department head. I can authorize, well, department's a bad example. I'm the county manager. I can authorize a $7,000 purchase. But before I commit the funds, I have to go through this procurement process. So this is how, in practice, this policy will work. So I would refer to the procedure section of the policy. I would read the simplified procurement steps, which I'm not going to read through in the interest of time, but I would, you know, encourage the board to, to read through these. And, and they're very important for especially finance director and, you know, eventually a county manager to be familiar with, as they're going to be involved in that process as well. And in terms of formal procurement, again, it's very similar to what we've been accustomed to. The publication requirements, currently, our publication requirements are pretty limited. And I, I think that can be advantageous to the county. Sometimes the medium for publication that you want, you know, isn't necessarily the county newspaper if you're trying to target vendors that aren't, aren't located in our, in our area. And that isn't to say that you shouldn't publish in the county newspaper, but it's appropriate and encouraged to advertise these bids in any other media where they're likely to attract qualified bidders. I mean, that is really the main goal. And I will tell you, my own experience with RFPs is that there are now like software bots that seem to be able to pick up on, I mean, they just constantly search the internet for the word RFP. And, and so a lot of times, at least more sophisticated services, they, they, they do that. They, like architects or contractors, they do use that type of software. And so they will find a bid that's posted on a county website. However, if you know that the service or the good you're looking for is, is available locally or regionally, then by all means, you know, that bid should be, a request for bids should be posted locally. Bids, formal bids should be published a minimum of 10 calendar days. You know, I've seen a range, but everything from five to 15. But this is a, this is a typical number of days that we would see. And this is the current number of days required under our policy. With at least one appearance, if it's in a periodical publication, something that, you know, unlike the internet, that is, that is only published once a week or once a month, then it should be, should appear at least one time. I'm gonna cover this one element of the cop, the evaluation criteria, and then pause again for questions. Our current policy allows wide latitude for local bidders. And that is very common. I think all, all purchasing policies give some kind of credit or discount to local bidders. This is really, again, it's up to, it's up to the commissioners to determine what they think is appropriate. But if a bidder, I, I've written what I've seen commonly. If a bidder is located within Lake County, then a 10% discount shall apply to their proposed price. Meaning they bid $1,000 or $100,000, and an out of town bidder bids $100,000. The local bidder will be treated as though they, they bid 90,000, and they would win because they would be the low price in that case. If the bidder is located within an adjacent county, then a 5% discount would apply. You know, just think on these things as a board. You can, you can really do whatever you wish. The current policy doesn't apply percentages at all. It just says that the, the board retains the right to award the contract to a local, a local bidder, period. And if you want to keep that practice, that's fine as well. I've also seen, for example, during COVID, some counties have been doubling the local discount just to encourage economic development. But just some food for thought on that. Any comments or questions on the publication requirements or this local discount, bidders' location criteria? Okay. I'm gonna skip some of these details. They are, they're pretty straightforward. They're not very subjective. Of course, I'm, we're, I'm open to any suggestions or comments, but I don't think they're quite as, they require as much discussion. Okay, this order of contract just describes the turnaround time. Now exempt purchases. I'll just kind of quickly touch on these. And please tell me if you have questions, or you think anything's missing, or you think an exemption is inappropriate. Because remember, the only exemption we currently have in Lake County from the procurement process for all purchases over $5,000 is the emergency purchases exemption. And that's pretty tightly defined. So number one would be amendments to existing contracts, which could be either an extension, you know, the work isn't going to be completed as soon as we thought. And in this case, an extension up to two one-year terms beyond the initial term would be allowed without a, a new round of procurement. And of course, they'd be subject to annual appropriation to the budgeting process. Another type of amendment to an existing contract would be a price and price or scope increase. And, you know, this is another example of an amount that is really at your discretion, commissioners. And, and I think Crystal, you know, you could weigh in on this as well, but it's, it's what makes the most sense for Lake County. So you have a, you have a contract, it's $100,000. Turns out that you want to add a little something, broaden the scope, increase the price. On, as this is written, that could happen as long as it is no more than 10%, a 10% increase, or no more than additional $10,000, the lesser of those. You know, I don't see the big picture here. I don't know how often contracts are amended and, and whether that amount would be sufficient. Okay. Cooperative purchases, piggyback purchases, we touched on those in government contracts. I think something to consider here with the cooperative purchases is whether you would like to exempt only political entities working together, the county and the city, or the county and the state. The county and, you know, Lake and Chaffey County buying something together. Or if you'd like to extend that exemption to multiple departments ordering together. Something, something to think about, and that's flagged for your consideration. Soul source. So this is one that I get, Chris and I get asked about a lot. You know, why, you can't, can't we just soul source this? So this is a very important exemption to procurement, but it is not a catchall. And I think, I think it's important to understand that this is really only intended to be used when there is truly only one source practi- practically or reasonably available. So that's sort of a subjective standard, but it's really meant that you, there just isn't anybody else, either anybody available or anybody qualified other than the one provider. And in that case, this is an important piece. Written justification for the sole source exemption needs to be provided to the commissioners and retained, and retained with the county's records. This is a common dispute. So, you know, the county contract, not, not in our county, but in, you know, in lawsuits across the state. So, you know, the, the county or municipality contracts with a preferred provider, but there were actually other capable bidders, and they were not given the opportunity to bid. And so we don't want to have that situation happen. Professional services, professional services are often exempt from procurement procedures. But I would note, this is that procurement is still preferred, but it would not be required under this policy for skilled professional services. That, that tends to be because they, they don't always, the, the best provider for the municipality is not always the cheapest. It's not, it's not a lowest bidder type of service when you're, when you're talking about people with a high degree of skill or experience. And so, you know, you see this with accounting firms, architects, engineers, attorneys. If there are other examples you think should be included in there, let me know. Keep going down here to more emergency purchases. So I'm just gonna flag that this, I, I had a conversation with Kaylee Hamm and let her know, because I know this policy, the Lake County Government Comprehensive Emergency Operations Plan is, 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 you know, very closely integrated with the emergency purchases. And I don't want this policy to conflict with, with that plan. And she said that that is currently also under review. And so I just, you know, we'll talk with her. But I think it might be most appropriate that we keep this exemption fairly limited in scope, and then it, it referred to that emergency operations plan. It's, this, this section's a little bit of a work in progress, given that that plan is, is under review as well, is what I'm saying. This is the current policy that, that in an emergency is defined by statute. The B O C C, the Director of Emergency Management, elected officials could spend up to $100,000 without, without prior budgeting or formal procurement. So that's a real big, that's a very big exemption. And finally, real, real property and water rights, so purchase or lease of water rights or real estate are exempt from the purchase procurement process. Okay, any questions on exempt purchases?
How, can, can I ask a question again? Sorry, this is, first my unfamiliarity still with sort of how we do stuff. But like, what, what if we ha, I mean, if there's an annual, I mean, like, again, like, say, the utility, you know, example where we have a large sort of annual or even multi-year contract, where like the monthly billings are, would trigger these thresholds. So, so sorry, maybe, I'm just wondering if there's like, if there should be an exemption for, you know, large individual expenditures under an existing approved contract? Like what do we, what, what's the sort of approval process for that? Because like, on, on the one hand, they're fairly routine. On the other, they're still really large.
Well, so a multi-year contract, the, the, the total commitment, the total, as the policy's written, the total annual commitment is what would, you would consider when you're applying it to the table. And then, you know, if it exceeds $15,000, then it should go to formal procurement. I mean, that, that is what should be happening presently. Whether or not it is, I'm, I'm not sure. And I think you raise a good point about a utility like, well, electricity would fall within the sole source exemption, gas, water, sewer. I think there's only one provider of each of those things. But I, if there's another multi-year, like software contract, for example, if the total, whatever the total annual commitment is, you know, that, that's, that's where you would plug that number in and see what procurement procedure needs to be followed.
Yeah, and again, may, maybe I'm just confusing things, but I'm wondering like, so, you know, when that monthly bill comes, it gets submitted, you know, the invoice gets submitted into the accounts payable stream of things to get paid. But it wouldn't, you know, it itself wouldn't. I mean, it, it'll get reviewed, it'll get, it'll get reviewed in the review of AP runs, but it won't go to the, to the board because it's already been essentially approved.
Yes, yeah. And so by the time the bill comes, the procurement process should have been completed. And, and so when, when the bills come in, you know, that there's no longer a question, I mean, in a best case scenario, there's no that longer a question of whether the funds were, should have been committed. Crystal, do you, this is really your, you know, this is your world, you know, but do you have anything to, to say about like, when bills come through on a monthly basis? You know, do you presume that they have been properly procured, those services or goods?
That would be ideal.
Right. I mean, I, I think we're, this is what we're trying to do is, is make a clear policy.
Sorry, Katie, I couldn't, I couldn't unmute from this phone. By the time it comes to finance, we, we are under the assumption that yes, it has, that has already transpired. And that we shouldn't be chasing tail to make, you know, to make sure that that has happened. I think I understand where Commissioner Fiedler is coming from, though, with some of those recurring expenditures for, for say, the utilities and, and the cell phone bills and those types of things. Because often they are, they exceed that 5,000, but they would be approved. You know, they are approved through the, the budgeting process as well. We are not going out to, to bid for our utilities or, or anything annually. And I don't know if that's something that we should talk about for, for like the cell phone provider or, you know, how we want to approach those types of services.
Yeah, and I was just gonna chime in again, maybe, maybe my question's sort of better addressed in kind of reviewing how we efficiently approve the AP runs rather than this procurement policy. Because to your point, by, 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 by the time something gets submitted to finance, it should have, it, it should have gone through this procurement policy.
Yeah, that's the idea. And, and, and let's be clear, one of the major failings of the current policy is that it's, it's probably overly broad. You know, it requires all purchases over $5,000, except for emergency ones, to go through a public competitive bidding process. And that's just not practical or realistic, and that's not typical. And so, you know, to the extent that that's not being done, I, I think we can understand part of that goes back to the policy being, you know, just overly broad. But I, I think a good point about the cell phones and utilities, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a note for myself. You know, just as a, I, I think there's very good reason to be trying to get competitive pricing for something like cell phones, services, if, if that's even, if that's possible. But I doubt, you know, AT&amp;T is going to respond to a bid, request for bids. And so I'm gonna look into that, that, those types of services. And, you know, the, the utilities. And, you know, the, the utilities, I, that's just, I don't know, it's just one of those things probably just grandfathered. But I, I'll, I'll look into that, just find out what other, what other municipalities are doing.
Also, so, sorry, I'm, I am going to backtrack a little bit, apologies, I, I was off, off the call for a second. But I was also curious if there are other examples of, like, I'm wondering if there should be a requirement that like particularly large R F Ps have, I don't want to say a review by the B O C C, but like, I, I, I think my, my, my intent is that, that the B O C C doesn't get blindsided by large stuff. And I could, I, I, I could definitely see wanting to at least be notified when large R F Ps are going out to bid, in case we have questions or concerns about those. And again, I don't, I, I don't want to overly complicate things or micromanage what's already been approved in the budget. But, you know, like, if we're putting out to bid like a three-year contract for like a hundred and fifty K a year, that's kind of a big deal.
Yep, and that is why you are the only entity allowed to authorize that kind of purchase.
We authorize the purchase, but the first time we hear about it could be when a contract is brought to us for approval. And I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I, and this is, I guess, like, like, like a question, not a, like, demand, but I was wondering whether it would make sense to have the B O C C in the loop on, on such a large R F P going out in the first place.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, and currently, my understanding is that all R F Ps are approved by the board. But I, you know, that doesn't mean that's actually happening. I will make sure, that, that absolutely should be happening. And that's not a, you're not presenting an unreasonable obstacle. That's what's intended by this authority, that, that, that you authorize the, the procurement at all. So I will make sure that that's clear.
I will say generally that, that happens, that, 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 yeah, that, that's happening across a lot of the county.
Yeah.
And we are informed, I mean, that's, that's usually just like general professional courtesy in respect of an inquiry to the board or your managing commissioner of, you know, the, the, either the approach, the project, vetting, and, and if it wasn't something that was brought to us the prior year for budget purposes. You know, there, there are multiple opportunities for those conversations to happen, which I think typically do. It is very difficult when they do not occur, though.
Yeah. I, I, I definitely want to make that clear. I'm glad you brought that up, Jeff. There are, skipping down here, there are here that get, that just lays out the specific steps for procurement, but I don't, it, it, it doesn't put that, it doesn't make clear that the, the board needs to approve the R F P. So I'm definitely going to add that step and make that clear. It does, does have a review of the bid documents by the county attorney's office or the county, whoever the county attorney is, and that, you know, that's one level of review, but it's, it, it doesn't necessarily pertain to reviewing the expenditure itself. So, yeah, I will definitely add that to, to this exhibit.
Yeah, and I guess I, in one sort of like reality check from department heads I'd love is like, how many, I mean, I don't want us to suddenly be reviewing more R F Ps than we, you know, physically can get on our agendas and become a bottleneck.
Well, and that may come back to what that threshold here. You know, maybe this number needs to be higher. And that would, that would allow these folks, Finance Director, County Manager, Managing Commissioner, or B O C to review the bid materials. And then, and then reserve only those larger contracts or larger expenditures for B O C C approval. Something to think through. But I, I agree with Sarah, at least in the time I've been involved with the county, it does seem, it, it seems to me that the departments I've worked with understand that R F Ps for larger purchases require board approval. Okay. Going to go down, we've covered exempt purchases. And then there are a few non-exempt purchases. So it, it seemed important to call out in the, in zone section that there are a few types of purchases, categories of purchases that regardless of how small they are, really, they require board approval. And so, or, or a higher level of approval through, through procurement process. First is construction contracts, this is regulated by state statute. Competitive bidding is always required for construction contracts involving county highways. The second that I, I've seen in other policies and, and I, and I think could be valuable in Lake, is just making it clear that any, any purchase that involves duplicating a position where those duties are already being performed by another county employee should require advanced approval by and then pop property water rights and leases, which is described right above here. So it's, I called it out because it's, it's a little confusing, it's exempt from procurement, but it should always require, the B O C C should always approve any purchases of real estate, water rights, or, or leases. Is that clear? Do those make sense? Okay. All right. Go ahead, someone going to say something? Okay.
I, I was wondering if we want to, I mean, maybe this is already broad enough, but I wonder if you wanted to specifically call out some functions where there's like particular liability on the county, like H R or, you, you know, like finance procedures?
This is Chris, I, I, I would recommend probably leaving it broader just because the concern is if you specify certain functions or departments or some such, the presumption is it doesn't apply to in other circumstances. So I'd be cautious about, about narrowing that by being specific as to where it applies.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. I think we've covered all the highlighted areas that I had in mind. Let's see. Yeah, that doesn't mean that you shouldn't read these, but it, it may mean that we can, we can talk about, I'll, I'll briefly go over them, but we can move to the next kind of bullet point, which is, you know, getting more input and adoption and implementation of the policy. So, so these other important considerations, I, I think they're just helpful reminders about purchasing and they, they don't, you know, really belong in their own category. Ethical considerations, guidelines for what to do with surplus property, you know, the prohibition on making multi-year financial obligations. And, you know, some guidelines about independent contractors under Colorado law. And, you know, it's important to remember that when the county contracts with an individual, they're presumed to be an employee under Colorado law. So we, we want to make an effort to contract with folks who have established entities to work through. This is something that Crystal and I discussed a little bit. It's very common in other municipalities to have a vendor packet. And this, it sounded like this could be really helpful just for expediting payment and, and making sure there isn't, there, there aren't any issues at the end of the year with issuing ten ninety-nines. And so that's, that's just sort of a practical piece that a new vendor needs to provide the Finance Director with. They're mostly their W nine and their proof of insurance. Okay, and then the policy may be amended by resolution of the board. These procurement steps, these aren't intended to be, you know, it's an exhibit, it's intended to be a document to just give guidance to the staff who are go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, Katie, I had a comment on the other important considerations. One, one additional bullet I'd like to consider adding is something along the lines of an expectation that if a expenditure sort of reasonably or foreseeably imposes costs or staff time on another department, that there's consultation.
I like that.
Again, should, you know, you'd hope that would happen anyway, but.
I like that, Jeff.
I'm sure Michael, if you were still here, would appreciate that as well. I just, it seems like if anyone's going to get saddled with things, it's probably Public Works. But, okay. Okay. Okay, I think it's a really good suggestion, I'll, I'll flesh that out a little bit, but I think I understand. You know, this is, this, this page is intended to just be helpful. And I, I'm sure, like, each time I look at it, I think I try to pare it down just a little. If, if it's a document that anybody should be able to read, I want it to be clear. And one thing that Crystal and I discussed was, the, and this is very common, is the idea of creating a qualifying bidders list. And, and, you know, that, that can just simplify the bidding process. So, you know, you do your, you publish your R F P, but you also send it out to qualified bidders. Or, you know, through the simple purchase process, it can be helpful just to reference bidders or, or providers locally who, you know, have, have filled out a form that says, you know, they are qualified to provide services to the county. That's something I think can be listed here. And that, you know, we can work on separately, like defining what a qualified bidders list would look like for the county. And this is just a practicality, and I want to make sure that it works for Lake County, but Crystal and I can discuss that. And, okay, so this is, this is, it's, you know, see itself is eleven pages, including this exhibit, hopefully not too painful. In terms of, you know, thinking about this big picture, and this is what I, I would recommend be the first a suite of policies to replace the current finance policy manual. Everything in there needs a little bit of tuning up. And also, you know, just, there's just this practical thing about the current policy, which is that it's, it's in a PDF that's been like printed and scanned, and then that was printed and scanned, and it's just kind of hard to read. And so I think just the practicality of having like a clean searchable collection of policies will really be valuable to the county. And the question for you all is, you know, how do you want to go about, what, one, do you agree with that? Do you agree that you'd like to revise all of the policies? And if so, you know, let's be, let's be, let's honor this policy and make sure that the, there is money in the budget for that and think about budgeting for that service. And then think about timeline and capacity. And so that's sort of a big picture comment about adoption of this. It's perfectly fine for the board to adopt this policy through a resolution that, you know, clarifies that this policy would replace any of the purchasing and procurement policy in, in the current finance department manual. You know, you can have both, and that's okay. But, you know, I do think people tend to follow rules better when they understand them and they feel they had input in them. And, and so I think in, in terms of next steps, you know, obviously, you all need to have some time with this. The board needs to have time with this. And then, I guess I'd like guidance on, you know, how you'd like to see me solicit input or from other department heads, elected officials, agency directors.
Well, th, th, this is Jeff, I can chime in maybe first and, and then, you know, let Crystal correct anything I said and, and Commissioner Marcela too, having been the, sort of, very recently, the Managing Commissioner over the Finance Department. But I mean, I think I, my sense is like, yes, we should go through all of these. I think the next step, sort of as you said, is like, figure out which ones are most pressing and sort of causing the most problems right now, or most out of date. And sort of for each one, you know, get a sort of, kind of, best guess of the resource, you know, can we do it in-house? Can, you know, how, how much work's going to take to get each one updated? But maybe with a goal of at least within the next sort of twelve months, get to each of these. And, and then we can just sort of fine tune, see whether that's realistic, kind of capacity-wise and, and cost-wise. But, but, but I agree, I mean, these are all like pretty dated and not in a, just, as you said, just a good format. So I think we should get that on, on a plan.
Yeah, I like that, Jeff, and I think moving forward with this, with the intention, kind of overall in developing and evolving the operational structure across the county with the long-term overall priorities in mind. And, and is, is, you know, this is just a piece of that goal of getting everybody in the same level of understanding and, and, you know, steering the ship together. I think that it would be, you know, we do have elected official and director meetings, but I'm not, I think it would be a better use of everyone's time to schedule some individual time either with you, Katie, or to, to block out a time with the board and legal, or however we want to look at that, and invite folks to kind of maybe sign up for, for blocks of time to, to provide their input.
Yeah, I mean, I could distribute the draft, once you guys, you know, there, there's a few more things I want to add based on this conversation, and I think you all will, will think of more questions or comments. But I could send the, the, the next draft to the department heads and, you know, offer, offer to chat with them, we could do, you know, I could do a a Zoom meeting with, if anyone wants to join, you know, that would be a little more efficient. People can hear each other's questions then. And I suppose if anyone has anything that they don't want to share in a group setting, they could always email or, or call me.
Yeah.
Talked about in terms of implementation, that doing a, like a training. But I think in doing that through Zoom, where you just walk through, walk through the policy and the procurement steps. And, and, you know, we could, we could start that way with, on the front end before it's adopted too. Kayla, I see you're raising your hand.
Yeah, thanks, Katie. Um, I do think that that's a good idea. And I think when we look for implementation, I'm just curious about some of the things in here, like the vendor packet and the R F P process specifically. Will we have uniform forms for that to make available to directors or? added to the to the backend of this policy?
Yeah, the vendor packet is something I think we could do quickly because it's it's really just a couple elements. Crystal, tell me if you disagree. And then we really already have a sample RFP, so just, you know, just really fine tuning it. But yeah, I think it's a good idea to have an example as an exhibit to this.
Yeah, I I think we've been trying to utilize the one that you had developed with with the tower project, because it's pretty, it's really formal, and I think if we can keep it as formal as possible, that'd be great. But I I do like having the idea of, here's the forms, here's how you can find them, here's how you plug and play. And then here's the process type of thing.
Yep.
Independent contractor, template, theos.
Crystal wrote in the chat, yes, we can create the exhibit and standard forms. Yeah, she and I discussed doing that. And I don't think it would take much time. Timeline for this policy, what are, what are you hoping for? To to get it to to before you for adoption, I think, is what I'm asking.
I guess it kind of seems like in the next couple of weeks, or when when you add, if you add those comments and make some revisions, we get comments back to you over the next week. And perhaps we start trying to schedule. Katie, were you saying, I'm sorry, a one block of time and inviting? Well, I guess we should probably invite, just just invite the solicitation of written comments and feedback from departments and elected officials. As well as, you know, when you send that to us, I would, I would be happy to have you include directors and elected officials. Not sure what Kayla or Jeff think, but and then perhaps the week after next, slate a block of time for folks to join on a Zoom meeting with you.
Yep. So the week of week of the twenty second?
Yeah, yep. And then
A group review.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would think that that's, that would be pretty straightforward and pending, that gives another week for any other, you know, work session together as a board, as far as incorporating comments that you've received, Katie, or we have received collectively the next week of the twenty ninth, and then perhaps the first meeting in April for consideration.
I think that's very realistic from my perspective. You know, I really I don't expect, you know, this to get but a ton of response one way or another. It's 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 actually a lot more flexible than the current policy. So I'm hoping it's well received, but but yeah, I think so, Monday, an end goal for adoption of the final version, Monday, the fifth.
I think that sounds reasonable. Commissioners, does that sound like a good timeline?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And then maybe at that time, we can revisit, you know, we'll have a better idea of how much time this took. And we could revisit what what would be realistic in terms of the remaining policies. There, there isn't, oh, this is the biggest one. So, you know, that that, keep that in mind, but it's it's there are others that I think are a little harder to work through, like the purchasing card policy might be harder to work through. You know, and some are just dictated by statute, like the balanced fund requirements. Anyhow, okay.
Katie, am I understanding correctly that the purchasing card policy will come after this as a separate policy then?
Yeah, I I think because, one, this is, yes, just in in a word, yes, the purchasing card policy, it just felt like its own beast. And it's typically, it typically is separate from from this policy, which is really about procurement of goods and services. And I think the purchasing card policy will would fall naturally under like an employee expenses policy generally. As I understand it, and just in reading the current policy, it's not, it's just not very clear or very organized around well, which expenditures, you know, are reimbursable, and which can be paid for under the cards. You know, everything from meals to travel, or what about an extended additional day as part of a training? Anyhow, there's a, there's a host of expenditures that fall under just employee expenses. And I think the purchasing policy could go there. I mean, those are all, and we could have those discussions around those topics together.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, and I think that you and maybe Crystal and I have talked about that travel policy and reimbursement policy and and that type of thing. We just need to make sure that we standardize it for human services. Eligibility for federal funds.
Okay, I'll I'll just flag that. What's really nice about purchasing cards, or at least about the the policies for them, is that the federal government has put out a number of like very helpful guides on best practices for this. So I, you know, I don't think it's going to require a lot of time on my part to figure out, you know, what is appropriate. It's it's just more kind of tailoring that to Lake County's practices. All right.
That's thank you. Thanks for that walkthrough, Kay. No, it's good. Um, all right, and then, yeah, I I guess also, I'm wondering if if there's that kind of developed list of that that menu of other policies that you might just just create and include as you send out the the next revised draft of this to us so that we have that, and we're sure to all have kind of those those items in mind. That would be great. Uh, any other questions for Katie from finance or commissioners?
I don't have anything.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay. Well, with that. Mr. Fiedler, do you have something?
No, I'm all good.
All right, all right. Well, that was our primary goal, and we're coming up on four thirty two. So I think with that, we've hit the items on the agenda. We'll look for that and we'll, yeah, we will, we will plan to organize. Katie, also, I guess, for the week after next, you're going to send that out to us and the elected officials and directors. And for the week after next, would you also give us a maybe one or two blocks of time that we can offer to to the elected officials and directors?
You want me to off, give you those now?
Sure, of your time, sure.
Yeah, or, I mean, did you want me to coordinate that meeting, or or I guess we need to sign that?
That would probably be, yeah, I mean, that would probably be easiest if you want to include that in that.
Sure. But that makes complete sense.
Okay, awesome.
I'll get out that that next draft. If there's anything from your particular comments that I need to circle back with you on, I will do that before I send out the next draft.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
Crystal, all right, and we will adjourn.
Thank you.